...County Planning Commission, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As last time, please make sure your cell phones are turned off. Any final action taken on a conditional use permit request will take effect in five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, December 3, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, December 16, at 9:15. The preliminary subdivision plan will be heard at that same meeting on the 16th. Final action taken on the text amendment, which we have before us tonight, will be heard on January 6. That's a little change for those of you that might have gotten these notes handed out previously. So that'd be January 6 for the text amendment. At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the October 27 meeting are included in that. Are there any objections from the planning commissioners to any of the items listed on the consent agenda?
I'd just like to have item five put on the regular agenda because we don't have those very often.
Okay. Any others? I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I'd like to hear staff on number seven. So I'd like to move five of number seven then as well. So five and seven to the regular agenda. All right. Then what I will do next is read the items on the consent agenda, and if any of you in the audience, the consent agenda will move really quickly. So if you want to have testimony and opportunity to speak about it, raise your hand when I read your item, and we'll make sure it gets moved to the regular agenda. So the first item is the minutes of our last meeting. I'm sure those were very exciting to you. The second item is the conditional use permit 14-51 to transfer a building eligibility. This is, location is 47-231-254th Street, and that's approximately 3.5 miles northeast of Crooks. Item number three is a conditional use permit 14-52 to transfer one building eligibility, and this is approximately two miles northwest of Garrettson. Item number four is a zoning text amendment 14-05 to amend section 7.04 of the 1990 revised zoning for Minnetonka County. Anyone want to discuss that? That stays on the consent agenda. Number five is being moved. Number six would be on the consent agenda unless there's concerns, and that's a conditional use permit 14-53 to transfer one building eligibility, and this is located at 45867-267, or 66th Street, and that's approximately six miles southwest of Hartford. Number seven I've asked to be pulled to the regular agenda on the consent agenda at this time is number eight, which is a conditional use permit 14-55 to allow a manufactured home on a property that is located at 48-628-253rd Street, and that's approximately, I think that's one mile east, or it's on the east of Garrettson. Those are the items on the consent agenda. I didn't see any objections. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
There is.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the sign, same sign, the motion carries on the consent agenda. Now, if your item was one of those that I just read and was on the consent agenda, you're free to go or stick around until you can, if you'd like.
There may be a spot available on this commission next year if you guys want to.
Thank you.
Getting them all, but getting them good, actually.
That moved them out.
Number five, Scott.
Okay, number five is a preliminary subdivision plan. This is a plan to create seven separate tracts consisting of approximately 144 acres. The property is located northeast of Brandon, and it's located at the intersections of East Redwood Boulevard, North Chestnut, and Interstate 90. And this is a little bit different than we typically deal with subdivision plans because the applicant is doing this as sort of an estate cleanup situation. There, I'll show you, this is the subdivision plan as it sits, and they will all be farmed. The parcels are going to be farmed. There are two building eligibilities located on this entire parcel. There's one that is here that is available, and then there's one that's over here that is by conditional use. There's also a third tract that they're plating that was down in here, had about 14 acres, that did not have a building eligibility on it. So on the entire 144 acres, there are two building eligibilities, and we will work with the, excuse me, the applicant to determine what tract they want to put that on, and then they tell us we assign it to that tract, and then if they want to move it, they would have to move it just like they would with any other building eligibility. But at this point, we put it on, we will assign it to whatever tract they want in that, on that parcel, in that quarter section. And one of them would still be by conditional use if they, for approval. There, when we review a preliminary plan, we go through the subdivision regulations, and we review a number of things to make sure that the subdivision plan has legal access, that there are infrastructure that's, if any infrastructure is needed, that they show us what that is, that they provide engineered road plans. This situation is sort of unique because they are not really indicating any interior roads. There are no new roads. All the parcels are going to have access off of those, off of Chestnut and Redwood, with the exception of, there's two lots, tracks two and six, which are being provided legal access through what appears to be an easement, and I noted that in the comments, that if you look right here, there's a dotted line that provides access up to track six and up to track two, but they never, they didn't really indicate on the plat that it's an access easement. They just showed a dashed line, and so that has to be corrected on the final plat. And we're recommending approval with, of the preliminary plan to allow the seven tracts with that one condition, that prior to the county commission approval, the 66-foot area extending from East Redwood Boulevard to tracks two and six must be identified as some kind of legal access, either a private access easement or private roadway, or if they're going to dedicate it as a public road, that's also, they can also dedicate it as a public right-of-way. But typically, they'll indicate these as a private access easement. It is within the city of Brandon's plating jurisdiction, and they've already signed off on the plat. No one at the city of Brandon caught the easement thing, so, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. I do have a couple pictures. I mean, it's all just farmland.
I have the question, Scott. I've seen the pictures. I know where this is. I mean, it's right east of there. You see it from the highway. Okay, so, this is a quarter land, it has two eligibilities. Why is he entitled to five additional eligibilities, which are worth about $250,000?
He's not getting eligibilities.
If you're setting a tract, doesn't that not come with the conditional use permit?
No. We plat properties all the time that have no building eligibilities.
Okay, that was why I was confused on this. I'm thinking, okay, so why are we plating this up? Why do we care how he draws that up?
It's primarily for transfer of ownership.
Okay, but why do we care about that as planning and zoning if there's no, as long as they only have, know there's only two eligibilities on that land? It's up to you how you figure it out, folks. It's not our problem.
Yeah, that's exactly where we are. It's basically estate planning, and they're dividing this up among heirs.
Why can't we care less about the heirs and all that? That's their problem. You know, you see everybody else's forties and all that, especially if you go to Northwest Iowa, you see quarters of land split up, and the forties, all the kids' names on it.
But when you want to plat these tracts, they have to bring it to planning.
Yeah.
So because this is, because they're plating a larger number of them, it's required...
So the next thing, they'll come back and say, oh, we should really get a house on this thing. No.
Well, there's no building eligibility. They may, they may think they want one, but there's no building.
But yes, who usually will say yes to that? An elected body that we tend to deal with every once in a while. Oh, it's right next to Brandon. Oh, yes, go ahead. Why not? That's what we deal with.
Well, I understand that's what, that you, that's your perception, but it, this happens all the time, Commissioner Seifer, where we divide up properties into several parcels, and they may not have building eligibilities. We do about...
I guess that's why we had to even deal with that.
Pardon me?
When it's just a private transfer, that's...
No, you don't see them. I deal with them every week. We do about three or four plats a week. I do. I review them internally. If they're less than three lots, then typically, we just, we administratively approve those as a, basically a minor plat is what we would call it. But because this goes over that threshold of what would be considered a few lots, it's seven, which is no longer a few lots, it's required to have a preliminary plan.
Well, I guess from a density zoning standpoint, my concern is, okay, it still should just be two eligibilities.
That's all they're getting.
Okay, that's fine.
Two of them will have building eligibilities, which they could build a house on. The rest of the tracts have no building eligibilities and just will be used solely for ag land.
Do you have any questions, Scott?
Are the applicants here?
I don't see them.
Move for control.
Chair, I honestly, though, would make a point here that we changed the ag eligibility for tax purposes from 20 to 40 acres, and I see that we have a 36-acre tract, a 21, a 18, a 7, a 35. All of these tracts are going to be at a higher rate.
Tax at a higher rate.
Tax at a higher rate than if they were 41 acres or more. I just...
Similar to like you do with acreages, like my place isn't considered ag.
Not anymore. You know, you have a place on the driveway and keep a shuttling pony in the back, it's no longer an ag operation.
My 200 bushel of corn didn't count this year. Put together one acre.
Damn. Had they been here, they'd hear that, but, yeah.
I'm fine with it. Like I said, I just want clarification on how all that work.
That's how it works.
Is there anyone else that has questions or comments about this item? I'd move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Have you done all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side.
Thanks for calling.
Just in case they ever come back, right?
I helped farm this ground for a year or two, and it's, I mean, that's the way the ground lays. It just lays funny. I think they just made it the way, there's tree lines, there's all kinds of tree lines, and I think they just said, well, this fence lines this, and it's pasture and little patches.
Still have a chance to get out here by 10.
Yeah. There's pressure there. So, number seven, I wanted to hear a little bit of our thinking about this one.
David Heino, Planning Department, item number 7, 14-54, conditional use permits to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area. He's requesting 2,650 square feet. Petitioners grant edge combed. The property is located roughly at 266-85 Dayspring Circle, which is about a mile, about a mile southeast of Well Lake. Petitioners requesting to construct a 40-foot by 64-foot metal pole building for personal storage. As you can see on the site plan shown, let's skip forward here, the building would be located just to the northwest, this is actually, north is looking to the right, so this is northwest of the house. The property owner is immediately to the east, if I go back one slide, the petitioner actually owns about four to five acres on this lot that is separated into separate tracts. The two adjacent landowners to the east have the same number of square footage, 1,680 square foot. As you can see in these two images right here, skip forward, this is just an aerial view of what those buildings look like. As you can see, they're in the rear yard, so it'd be a little bit more difficult to see, whereas this building would be right across from there, two driveways right there. On November 12, 2014, staff conducted a site visit to determine if the proposed building size would be adequate for the area with regard to the petitioner's lot size, seeing how, what the other accessory building sizes are on smaller lot sizes, and this one is about five times the size of some of those other lots, so in comparison to that. The petitioner also has two hoop shed, two hoop sheds in this picture. You can kind of see them faintly right along this tree line that will be removed upon construction of the proposed accessory building and was included in one of the conditions of approval. There is another building that is actually to, right here, that is actually at the entrance to Dayspring Circle, right off the section line road. We go back to that. And just some of the criteria that we go through in determining conditional use permits. Number one, that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for use is already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Well, there are a few properties in the immediate vicinity that have a total accessory building area, as I mentioned, up to 1,680 square feet, and the petitioner's requested sizes is roughly comparable to the other accessory buildings adjacent to the subject parcel. So they're, other than that visual impairment of being right across the driveways, there shouldn't be a significant impact on property values and of surrounding properties. Number two, that the effect upon normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for use is predominant in the area. The accessory building may only be used for residential purposes, so no commercial or business activities are allowed at any time. Given the size of the other larger accessory structures in the immediate vicinity of the petitioner's property, a 2,560-square-foot accessory structure would be congruent with the land composition, given the different, the differing lot sizes within that area. That utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Access to the proposed structure will be provided off of Dayspring Circle, so no further infrastructure will need to be provided. That the off-street parking and loading requirements of these zoning ordinances are met. No off-street parking will be needed with supplemental area for parking as a result of residential activities. No commercial or business parking will be allowed at any time. The measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting, inclusive of light assigned, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. No offensive nuisances shall be permitted at any time during use of the proposed structure, and the use of lighting should be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent direct spillage of light off-site. And number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building should, should have, should not have a major impact on the health, safety, general welfare, and the comprehensive plan. So staff finds that the requested total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the existing accessory buildings in the immediate vicinity. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-54 with the following conditions: one, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 2,560 square feet; two, that the two hoop sheds be removed upon completion of the accessory building; three, that the accessory building shall not exceed 35 feet in height; four, that the building shall be in accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential level; five, that only personal residential storage be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed at any time; six, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries; and seven, that a building permit is required prior to construction of the accessory building. And without any other entertaining questions that may have. Thank you.
Say one. Have we been requiring, to me, this is a good thing, shall be cut off light? Have we required that on these people?
I think so.
Yeah, I know so.
You know, a lot of times they'll just stick one of those galley lights on the wall that just flare out. You know, we saw, you see quite a few of those on the front, and there's the obnoxities all get up. So when it is cut off, that is, that's good, that's a good thing.
Can you scroll back to the other shot here of the... Is there a, that's just, is there? I drew, I'm trying to remember. There's not another outbuilding there? Okay.
Those are the hoop buildings there?
These are the two hoop buildings you see in white.
What's that greenish thing right to the left of you, Chris? What's that? Trees?
It's like an existing shed.
Yeah, so is that included, it's not included here, 2564, it should be, shouldn't it?
I'm going to clarify, the petitioner is here, so if you want to clarify with him.
All right. Any other questions for David? All these up? All right. Would the petitioner like to come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you want, and we'll, if that deals.
Grant Edge Call, 266-85 Dayspring Circle, and I'm looking to build a storage shed, personal use shed to put my stuff in. So, and then the shed that you saw, there's a 10 by 12 portable garden-type shed, two big glass windows, start plants, things in there.
And so the position of this thing, is it going to, you've got several lots there to make up your total landowner issue. So is this going to straddle any of the lots? I mean, or...
No, I have to stay within the lot line, I believe it was three feet worth of measurements from the...
Yeah, there's several different tracts.
Six and seven.
It's in the same one with your, with your home, so that you could potentially sell off those other lots someday.
That's, that's my hope, is by retirement, for sale. There are five lots.
It's not going to be on the same one as his home, though. It is on a separate lot.
On a separate lot. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this item? I guess the, can't believe the reason I asked this to pull the regular agenda is... Yeah, it's quite a bit bigger than the adjacent, and they were scaling it up based on additional individual implied lots of all under one ownership, and would they stay that way or not? You could potentially sell off two lots here and now have one that isn't necessarily scaled quite the same. Understand what I'm saying?
And then, and then I have the question on the square footage, because I thought I set up a utility, so by rights, I think we need to bump that, their request up by whatever it's, 144 square feet.
120 square feet.
So what should our motion be?
What is it, 2560? Is that what it was before?
Yeah, they have 120 to it. If you want to approve.
So it'd be 2680.
2680.
2680. So it's a full thousand feet more than the others.
Which sets a precedent for this mission.
Yeah.
Yes, it does. You know, we'd have to, we'd have to say that it's, you know, it's based on all these lots together, but we, there's no restriction that they'll retain, stay in one ownership as they are plating it.
Well, I would move approval for 2680.
And the motion approves, there's a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Giving down on all the questions, all those in favor, the approval, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries.
Okay. I didn't have one item of old business.
Oh, oh.
All right. We have a meeting next week?
Well, no, that's not the item of old business we're talking about. I'm going to, let me open, I'll just... Back in September, two months ago, we had a conditional use permit by Mr. Elbers, and he was in section 32 of which township, is it Hartford Township? Hartford Township. And he had two conditional use permits, or two eligibilities, sorry, on this entire parcel, and he applied for the conditional, to move one of the eligibilities, and in the conditions, it was indicated that it was going to be in the southeast of the southeast, which would be this parcel right here. And he came in this morning, and there either was miscommunication on someone's part, but he'd like to have the eligibility assigned to this portion here. And I put on my thinking cap, and I think, I thought that the easiest way to do this is just to correct the minutes from the September meeting, and we would then indicate that that's where his conditional use permit would be assigned, which I, I think we are still within the parameters of the, of what is acceptable, because he did go through the conditional use permit process in September. There was no one there that was opposed to placing the conditional use permit, so if you're agreeable to that, I'd like the motion to amend the minutes from the September 22nd, I'm not sure what the meeting was, the 22nd?
I'll still move.
To show it to the southwest, to the southwest.
Second.
Second, okay.
Unless we get another 250 bucks out of him for another.
Well, we'd like to start building, and if we went through a conditional use permit process to amend this all, it would be January, and he would be out.
The fact that it was, there was nobody here to object.
There was nobody there.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the minutes to the September meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, that one carries.
It's the handout from Vince Jones, the one attorney.
Good to go. Scott snuck an old one in there right in front of David.
And we didn't get 250 bucks for it.
Then, then that was the, that was the old business, and then David has a couple items of new business. And I think Kevin has one item for the, that was your item that got appealed, wasn't it? Or was it? Never mind. Okay.
Well, I have a little update on conditional use permit 14-48 for the daytime dog training facility. The county commission voted unanimously to approve that. They didn't have any changes in the conditions, same, pretty much the same property owners were present that were at the planning commission hearing. And just another thing, as far as, I sent out the notice for the Invision 2035 Task Force meeting in the chapter, so if you have any comments or suggestions on that draft chapter, feel free to send those our way. If you want to attend the meeting at any point on December 4th, Thursday, 3:30 to 4:30 in this room, be welcome.
As I read the narrative, I was, I kept thinking, as I was reading, that you summarized at the end all of the things that you really kind of said and wanted to do, and I thought that was a good summary at the end. In front, I was wondering, okay, where's the need? You know, the itching, so.
David, will you send a reminder out next week, probably in the week, maybe just for those members on that? Because there was only four of us, I think, last month, and Deb and I kind of thought that we were missing some people, so to speak.
Shannon, Shannon Nordstrom already said he's going to be flying to somewhere, so he's Cincinnati, he's not going to be able to attend. So we, we have been getting, I mean...
Give me some responses, okay.
Yeah, we've been getting some, but I, I agree, we'll send out two notices. We'll send out a notice again, and then like the day before, send out another notice, so, and then we hope we get a better turnout.
The one thing that I thought about when I was reading the recording, can do with trails and the county parks section is, many, many moons ago, decades ago, I was a charity bicycle plan committee in the city, and we had a plan, a long-term vision, a year or two years later, that you connect to, you know, county parks, and it may be, if the next time we're doing something on Highway 42 or West 41, that there's a bicycle lane to get out there or something like that. Just even a mention in a plan sometimes provides the impetus to get things, get somebody's attention there. So a mention of that, I think, would be, if, if it's a need, we'll, if people have a plan, I think connecting our county parks to the great asset that the city has inside would be a great thing to do.
Did I ever discuss with you guys the flight poles annexation?
Yes.
Well, it's come up in another area with the city of Brandon. I don't know if you know this, Scott.
You told me.
Yeah. The city of Brandon, you know, has got two chunks of Brandon, and they're separated by that park, right?
Right.
Well, along Holly or Rice Street, whatever, they, they annexed along the road there, but they didn't annex the road, they're saying, and so they want the county to plow the snow there. And meanwhile, meanwhile, like over here on the west side, you know, they annexed the whole road, but they won't mow the ditch, or because, you know, they don't do a lot of ditch mowing.
Because they have meetings, people take care of it.
Right, and we, we had a meeting to look at putting in a safe routes to schools thing, and you can't put in a request for that unless the school's five years old. So they plan to bus people to McGovern Middle School for the next nine years or so, and if they see a kid walking on the street, they're calling the cops.
It's a good plan.
They have two people that drive their kids there by car.
Open enrollment, they said.
Open enrollment, yeah. The rest of the people go by bus, and if they don't, we're calling the cops, because there's no, no sidewalks. There's a bridge going out there that's, there's no way you could walk on that bridge safely. And so they don't want the kids to be killed, but...
Is there a street now they should improve it?
Yeah, put a sidewalk.
Not in their plan.
It's not in their plan.
At least you got out from under the street.
Well, at least we didn't get their building permit on that school or anything.
It's, um...
What would it have been, Scott? Twenty million bucks? What's it, what?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand dollars for the county. So the city got that, so they don't get that much. They get a...
They get less, but it's...
They have a cap. So in case you build like the Sanford, some building, some Sanford building, you don't pay more than so much, but... So they, they took our building permit, they took the stuff and they're leaving it unimproved. Meanwhile, we paved La Mesa for three hundred thousand dollars, so that it wasn't a gravel road coming from the south up there. Really? You know, the public's not aware of that stuff.
The city's the ones got the money, that's true.
Well, it's, it's really poor planning, though, to build a place out there where there are no kids and where, you know, they're going to have to bus them for nine years. What does that cost?
Well, it's kind of like when they built Memorial Middle School.
That's what they, that's what they like to point out.
It was the same thing. And it could all of a sudden, the soup all started calling off school in the wintertime, because it's a blizzard on the west side of town. It's nice in town, but they couldn't get the memorial.
Well, in four years, Bob Lins and I will be driving the bus out there.
You don't know, you guys don't know the issues the township has with the city parks and the city, because of the parks that we have out in the rural areas. And we maintain it half the time, they maintain it half the time. Well, let's put it this way, they don't take, they don't do their part.
And not very good citizens.
No, and then we have the arboretum over there where, we're, I mean, the parks all around there. They've bought more land, they have the arboretum, but who's maintaining the road? Township. Why is that? When they put on all these curbs and gutters out there, they don't want us to damage them. Really? How do you do that with a maintainer? How do you do that when you can't see them in the wintertime?
You're supposed to, you, you have to open up the arboretum.
I give up.
This is helpful to me, but I'll just be right there.
Yeah. It's pretty helpful. There's actually another thing that came to my mind.
David's got more, folks.
I wanted to entertain. The, there's capture the community of the photo, or capture the character of the community photo contest. It's basically something to help generate a vision for the future of Minnehaha County. Is this, is for residents to submit, either whether it's photographs, art drawings, or any other kind of media that you can think of. It's just to help portray some vision for the future and to help establish, hopefully. My end goal with this project, originally when I came up with it, was to help develop a vision statement for the comprehensive plan to help guide all of their land use and planning decision-making. So that's ongoing for another couple of months. Originally, the deadline was December eighth, but extending that up to January thirty-first. So feel free to send it to Invision twenty thirty-five at Minnehaha County.
Is it on the county website?
It's on the county website, so you can take a look at that. And it's also in the newsletter. But I was going to print out some copies of that, too. We've got some copies up in the, the office. So if you'd like one, you can come up and get one of those, the hard copies. If not, I'll get the email out.
Anything else?
Well, are we going to have a goodbye party for Mark and something of like three-day drunk and bash?
I'll be at the county commission tomorrow and just under item, under liaison report or no, items, new, old business or new business, I'll get up and indicate that we do have an opening and the public's encouraged to apply. Last year, we didn't, we had not very much response. We had to actually end up beating the bushes at the end. I think Jeff talked to Steve Dick and, remember that last year, and we got Bill then to...
In the time before that, there was like five.
There was, but... So, anyway, if, if you're interested, Mark, you'll need to, you go on the county website or I can email you, you have to fill out a form and you can email it to the commission office. And then we will, sometime in December or first week in January or something, look around and try and see who applied and, and then the county commission decides who they want to appoint. Oh, and there's also a vacancy on the county commission. You may want to, maybe one of you want to apply.
That's absolutely right.
See, Jeff, you're...
More than one before you know it.
You're holding...
How was there a vac, how was there a vacancy?
Uh, just... So they're going to be talking about that tomorrow, right?
A little bit. I think there's a procedure outlined in law in the...
Okay.
So until he's actually gone, we don't elect anybody.
Okay, well, there you go, see?
So you just appoint. I should say just appoint.
If there are three vacancies, the governor appoints. But if there's, right now, Bob Lins will break a tie, like the vice president. If it's two to two, he breaks the tie.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Do you have some interest?
He's the only one.
We had, Scott Erlichman came in at the, that very podium and raised his hand. We've had another eight or nine people, you know. Some people have their...
Will there be some of this bipartisan, this partisanship going on during that process?
But you know what, I, the partisanship doesn't really bother me in this case. What I most worry about is having someone that I can get along with and operate in good faith. Because honestly, the group we've got now, we do, we don't... I was, I was pounding my fist about Bob and I think I scared her a little bit, but... The, yeah, you know, I think we all get along. I mean, I didn't get along so well with Ann Hyack and Bob Colby and Kell Tweed. It was just more, but they didn't get along with each other either. Bob would say something and they'd all roll their eyes. And, you know, Ann would vote against you because you voted against her last time. There's none of that going on now, but...
No wonder it's that way at the national level, huh?
It is that way at the national level.
Starts small.
So I'm happy to have a Republican, although there are a couple of independents who would make a good... I'm not even looking for a Democrat. In fact, I have suggested this name, although he's not one of the people that has applied yet. But, you know, he's been secretary of agriculture. I mean, the guy, you know, and the other day I asked Kevin Brown up north there if he would be interested, but he says he's too busy.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd want Kevin Brown.
Well, that's, that's the way it is, too. Well, not Kevin Brown for that, sorry, for your job. But Bill even for a county commissioner, I think he'd be a good county commissioner. He's even tempered and I'm the only bad-tempered one.
Just got to get him wound up a little bit.
I was wound, believe me. You know, in the, when we had the canvas of the vote, they said that's not the right time to talk about it. We'll put it on the, on, for the next meeting. And that's where I had it out, but next week they didn't, it wasn't on the agenda. So, okay, we made a mistake. We'll put it on next week's agenda. It wasn't on that agenda either. They had instead an agenda item to appoint a panel to investigate. So it was very frustrating for me. And you know, it was my fault. It was, it was my fault that the election went as badly as it did, because I didn't call attention to the fact that Bob, making eighty thousand dollars a year, wasn't spending any time in the office. They were making errors all over the place as far as sending out ballots and telling people where to vote and with no attempt to correct it. In fact, it's a hundred percent human error when you send the person a wrong absentee ballot. But you know what? Their answer was, hey, sometimes it happens. You know, try giving a guy, the wrong guy a vasectomy, see what the guy has to say.
All right, and we want you to adjourn.
Just declared.
Chasing everybody out.
David, I think this might be yours. Is that yours?